Good morning. I am going to call this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, October 23rd, 2019. We are meeting a little earlier than we typically do on Wednesdays, but my name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. And with me at the dais are Councilmembers Palmasano, Johnson, Worsami, Schrader, Councilmembers Cunningham, Fletcher, and Reich. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. And colleagues, we have two items on today's agenda in addition to our committee reports. And we will begin with item number one, which relates to the 2020 City Council calendar. And that presentation will be given by our city clerk, Casey Carl.
Good morning, Madam Vice President. Members of the committee, my name is Casey Carl. I have the privilege of serving as city clerk. With support from council leadership, the Clerk's office is bringing forward a proposed revision to the 2020 calendar previously adopted on November 16th, 2018. Prior notice of the proposed revision was given, and the revised calendar with a few amendments is presented today for your consideration. Copies were previously circulated to all council members. You should also have copies at your desks. As always, the official calendar lists the dates and times of regular meetings for the full council and for each of its standing policy committees, as well as the independent audit and executive committees. In preparing the calendar, staff follows longstanding guidelines with respect to the observance of various holidays, significant dates of interest, and other known events and activities. Looking at the draft calendar, there are a total of 23 regular meetings of the full city council, which are shown in black. This is roughly in line with the number of full council meetings from prior years. There are also a total of eight ward work weeks, which are shaded in light gray. These are generally aligned with holidays and correspond with work weeks in prior years. The notable exception here is the adjustment to the ward week planned in September, which leads into Labor Day rather than following it as in prior years. This was intentionally changed to better align with the schedule followed by the Minneapolis Public School. The other major improvement to the revised calendar is the inclusion of the Budget Committee's planned regular meetings for 2020, thanks to the proactive work of Councilmember Palmasano and her team. You'll see that these have been added in dark gray. Dates have been added to the months of March, April, and May to accommodate departmental presentations of results reports similar to this year's calendar. And then again, the Budget Committee's regular meetings tied to the 2021 budget have been penciled in as well in the months of September, October, November, and December. And again, these match similar scheduling practices from prior years. The draft has been circulated to all city departments as well, along with a reminder that in addition to not scheduling public-facing meetings or events on official holidays, departments also are not to conduct public-facing meetings or events on dates of special interest that are identified on the council's calendar. These are denoted with either an asterisk or an X. Finally, the calendar reflects dates of the two annual conferences hosted by the National League of Cities. Those dates are shown in parentheses every year in March and November. Staff requests favorable consideration of the draft calendar with the direction that the Clerk's office publish and post the calendar in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Chapter 13D, Point 04, Subdivision 1, and to update and maintain these calendars throughout the coming year as necessary to accommodate the needs of the council. With that, I've concluded my presentation. Madam President, I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. For that presentation, are there any questions or concerns or comments? Just gonna note the days with flags. Are those election days?
Madam Vice President, you are correct. The dates shown on the calendar on March 3rd, August 11th, and November 3rd are the dates of the three presidential-related elections we have next year. We will have a presidential nominating primary on March 3rd. We will have the regular statewide primary August 11th, and then the general presidential election on November 3rd.
Well, the elections team is gonna be quite busy.
Very busy.
Seeing no further questions, I move approval of item number one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carl. And item number two is a resolution adopting the Minneapolis 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And we will begin with a presentation from the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, Mr. David Frank. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, committee members. We're happy to be here this morning. Thank you for your time. A little background before where we are today and the next steps. The Metropolitan Land Planning Act requires municipalities in the Twin Cities area to provide the Metropolitan Council with an updated comprehensive plan every 10 years. The comprehensive plan must be consistent with the Metropolitan Council's Regional Development Guide, Thrive MSP 2040, that sets the direction for the region's growth and development. Local communities are served by regional systems planned by the Met Council, including housing, transportation, wastewater collection and treatment, and regional parks. As you all know, starting in mid-2015, our long-range planning team and leadership met with department heads and other city leadership on the comprehensive plan update process and began a discussion about citywide policy priorities and the budget implications for the planning process. It was clear early in this process that participants wanted Minneapolis 2040, our comprehensive plan, to accomplish more than just meeting the Metropolitan Council's minimum requirements. And so to this end, in 2016, the city council approved a civic engagement calendar directing staff to implement an extensive list of community engagement activities. And this outreach process continued for several years, excuse me, including periodic briefings of city council members and the mayor's office. During more than two years of subsequent engagement, the people of Minneapolis shared their vision and hopes for the city and its future. A main theme voiced was that as the city grows, everyone must benefit from that growth. Historically, this has not been the way it has been, and not everyone has. This plan is one opportunity to undo barriers and overcome inequities created by a history of policies in our city that have prevented equitable access to housing, jobs, and investments. The plan reflects the result of more than two years of engagement with the people of Minneapolis, including over 100 meetings and conversations with thousands of residents, business owners, and others. Public feedback directly helped to establish priorities and inform the content of the plan. From March until July of 2018, the city engaged with the public to discuss a first draft of the plan and to encourage review and feedback. And following the close of the public comment period in July of 2018, city staff made revisions to the plan based on that public feedback and presented a final draft to the City Planning Commission and City Council in the fall of 2018. Following additional changes to the plan made by the Planning Commission and by the city council, on December 7th of last year, the city council adopted a resolution authorizing staff to transmit the plan to the Metropolitan Council by December 31. Following two rounds of review by Met Council staff and subsequent technical revisions to the plan by city staff, the Met Council authorized the city of Minneapolis to put the plan into effect, determining that on September 25th of this year at their meeting that the plan conforms to the regional system plans, is consistent with Thrive MSP 2040, and is consistent with regional forecasts for growth. While the Minneapolis 2040 Plan is intended to meet the requirements of state statute and the Metropolitan Council, the plan also has particular significance for Minneapolis in a time of population and employment growth. The city alone cannot implement the policies in the comprehensive plan. This will require collaboration enterprise-wide and partnerships with external agencies and institutions to work towards comprehensive plan goals. The city will be responsible for collaborating internal to the enterprise, as well as with other local and county and state agencies, to implement various elements of the plan that guide decision-making and affect the long-term future of our city as it relates to the built and natural and economic environment. While work has already begun to bring about the outcomes called for in the plan, the official effective date of Minneapolis 2040, as proposed in the resolution before you today, is January 1 of 2020. Also effective on that date, subject to your further review and approval, will be inclusionary zoning, which we will present at the Housing Policy and Development Committee on December 4th, and changes to the city's zoning ordinance that will permit three-unit development throughout the city, which will be presented at Zoning and Planning on October 31st. And our co-development team is already underway on the work plan approved by the council this summer, including built form districts, which we expect will be before you mid-year next year. Staff intends to present a comprehensive plan implementation summary during the next council cycle, outlining efforts that are ongoing and those that are planned to take shape in the coming months and years. So as I mentioned, we are already working on key implementation considerations as part of our work plan, and we'll be recommending next cycle a steering committee of council members and staff to guide the work. With that, we recommend your approval of the resolution before you, and we are available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, for that report. And I'm going to see if there are any questions or comments. Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment very briefly on some of the work that's happening that we have heard about, both at Committee of the Whole as part of the Race Equity Subcommittee. That was in response to a staff direction that asked staff to prioritize race equity work in the comprehensive plan implementation. And we have the first of those presentations earlier this year. And then the work that's coming through the Zoning and Planning Committee, or the Transportation and Public Works Committee, the Housing Policy and Development Committee, the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee. Because of the breadth of this work, I think a lot of the implementation will be, has been and will become more diffused throughout the enterprise and therefore the council's committees. And I think that's great because it provides a lot of leadership for the whole council to really dig in and bring forward the true vision of this plan. And so in one sense, this plan has always been a legal document that is our land use map, but it is much more than that. And I think it's been very clear that the council was very serious when we made a commitment to prioritizing big issues like race equity, like climate change. We know that there are not simple solutions to those global problems, but I think we're ready to make sure that any action that we take is done carefully through that lens. And I appreciate the way that staff has responded to that and the way that we're continuing to keep this an enterprise-wide initiative. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much. I think this is a big and significant step, and it's worthy of noting and talking about a little bit. I appreciate what Councilmember Bender was saying as well, and I think this is such an extensive, complicated plan, and there's actually many pieces of it that are connected. And I know that there was some controversy when we passed it. And I think its implementation and the timing of the different policies, including those that specifically have to do with the zoning code and those kinds of changes, and then other policies that will help support those or help add some more regulation over them, or all of those things, it's gonna be really key that we coordinate that work and that effort. And I think there's gonna be a lot of desire to see some things changed quickly, but I think we also have to do the changes thoughtfully and cautiously and make sure we understand as we're making one change, what else were we intending to do and do we want to do to make sure that that's successful. So I guess I'm wondering a little bit about the big picture-wise in terms of how are we gonna coordinate all that work as a city enterprise so that we make sure that we don't end up having parts of our city making changes and we're not coordinating with other parts of it. I know that when we developed the comprehensive plan, there was a steering committee and a steer group that helped meet regularly and do some of that in the development and the drafting of it. And I'm wondering about the idea of having another leadership group with some policymakers on it, as well as leaders from city departments, to help coordinate that work. And I don't know if I can ask that question to city staff, if there's been any thought into that, or how we think we're gonna help guide this work and manage it in the coming year.
Welcome again, Mr. Frank.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, yes, we very much think that that is an appropriate and important step. So I hope I mentioned, and I'll say again, we do intend to recommend a steering committee comprised of city staff from across the enterprise, as well as council members, as part of our implementation report next cycle. So yes, agree with you.
Okay. Sorry if I missed that earlier, but I appreciate that and was hoping maybe we'd get to do that while we're passing it this time, but we'll look forward to that next cycle.
Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Gordon, for raising that issue. I think because of the multifaceted nature of comprehensive plan implementation, it's worth taking a little time to think about what the scope of any kind of steering committee would be. It's probably unlikely that a small group of council members could guide the entire implementation of the plan because it touches so many different areas. So I think we've talked about creating a steering committee that would be more specific to the zoning code amendments that would come through the Zoning and Planning Committee, which are more technical in nature. But perhaps there was a need to have, you know, multiple different efforts happening at the same time, and I'm not sure that that should all go through one body. So I think it's just worth us talking about that more.
Thank you, Madam President. I will note that it is the intention of the Race Equity Subcommittee to have regular updates of the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan, quarterly updates that will give us the opportunity to dig into some of the goals as they relate to the 2040 Plan and our progress on those goals. And so that would be, I think, one opportunity to get some updates and opportunities for input and feedback. But I do think because of the broad nature, we need to have multiple approaches to ensure that this work is moving forward at a desired pace. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will move that item for approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And that item carries. It's been a tremendous effort by the entire city and I wanna thank everyone for their hard work, and I think the more challenging work is ahead of us. So, all right. Our next item are our regular reports concerning committees on matters to be considered by the full council at our regular council meeting on Friday. And we will begin with the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, and that report will be given by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Vice President. The Economic Development Regulatory Services Committee will be bringing forward 15 items for consideration on Friday. The first item is, has to do with approving an application for Quincy Hall. It's my understanding that there'll be a motion out to council to table that. I think there's some negotiations that are still going on with the neighborhood. We heard some testimony and some concerns about it, and I think the operators are interested in having some more discussions. It might take longer than the time between now and Friday. Second item is another application for a business. This is at Pettisery. And third is approving an application for another business. So is the fourth, the fifth. I'll try to channel Councilmember Goodman and the way she gets us through these long agendas quickly. The sixth item is a bond issuance for Friendship Academy. Seventh item is adopting nuisance condition process review panel to uphold the inspector's orders to raise and remove a building at 3927 Upton Avenue South. The eighth is liquor license approvals. So is the ninth. The tenth is our regular gambling license approvals. And the eleventh item is renewals of gambling licenses. The twelfth is application for grant funding for our 2019 Brownfield Grant Round. The thirteenth is accepting a grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. And the fourteenth is Pathways to Prosperity's Grant Acceptance. That's also from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. And the fifteenth item is authorizing a forgivable loan to Fortis Capital to establish a revolving loan fund for a $2 million loan received by Fortis Capital for Living Cities. I'm happy to take questions, and I know that Councilmember Goodman and Vice Chair Ellison are sorry they couldn't be here for the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions or concerns? Any questions? Seeing none, our next committee report is the Enterprise Committee, given by Chair Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are seven items on the Enterprise Committee agenda to carry forward for a vote on Friday. The first four are contract amendments of increases to existing contracts, including a contract with the University of Minnesota for CAD services, computer dispatch services for their police department, a contract amendment to upgrade the current version of the Bentley Enterprise License Subscription, in addition to the contract to Clockwork Media for our city website project, and an amendment to enhancements for our LIMS system, that's our Legislative Information Management System. We also have a contract to provide medical plan options for retirees, an amendment to our HRA plan that will allow for 18 months from the date expenses are incurred for reimbursement to employees, and an agreement with the University of Minnesota and Minnesota Historical Society for record storage and curation related to our Stonewall Oral History Project. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we will hear from the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by, that report will be given by Chair Gordon.
Thank you. Housing Committee's bringing forward two items. One is a resolution granting approval for Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority to undertake a project at 14th and Central and through, issue bonds. And the second item is to reduce the housing improvement fees for the condos at Blaisdell Project at 2500 Blaisdell Avenue. Happy to take questions or comments on either of those items.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, the next committee report is the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, given by Chair Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward one item for approval this Friday. The first, or the only, is authorizing a 25-year lease in the amount of $100 per year with Greenway Solar LLC for roof space at the Eastside Storage and Maintenance Facility to install a low-income household community solar garden. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chair Cunningham. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, we will now move to the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee, given by the Vice Chair, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Vice President Jenkins. The Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee brings forward one item for consideration this cycle. It's a joint powers agreement between MPD and BCA to conduct state and federal fingerprint-based background checks for employees that require fingerprints for background screenings. I'm happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions? No. Then the next committee report will be the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by Chair Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 13 items. Item one is a special service district's 2020 proposed services and service charges. Items two and three are for non-governmental tax-exempt parcels for both street maintenance and light operations. Item four is the water sewer service line repair assessments. Items five is the Metropolitan Council Municipal Infiltration Inflow Grant for cured-in-place pipelining and sewer repairs. Items six is the limited use permit with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for Welcome Monument in the right-of-way at Washington Avenue North and Third Avenue North. Item seven, eight, nine, 10 are actions for street reconstruction projects for the locations listed. Item 11 is the GRIT application for MINDOT Natural Resources State Park Road Account Program for reservicing Theater Worth Parkway. And items two and 13 are accepting little bids for operations of the department. Madam Vice President, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Reich. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we will now hear from Chair Worsami with the Ways and Means Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee brings 14 items for approval on Friday. Item number one is the 2020-2023 Professional Services Agreement with the Minneapolis Public Schools for Election Administration and Related Support Services. Item number two is Resiliency in Communities After Stress and Trauma Program, Grant from the United States Department of Health and Human Services. Item number three is 2019 Property Tax Special Assessment of Delinquent Utility Charges. Item number four is the Third Quarter 2019 Donation Report. Item number five is a gift acceptance from Deloitte Services LP for Lyle Hodges to attend the Minneapolis Finance Leadership Program. Item number six is early approval of 2020 and 2021 Capital Budget Appropriations and Bonding Authority Adjustments for the Public Service Building Project. Item number seven is an agreement with Formation Studios for sculptures and related work at the Public Service Building. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Crawford Door Sales Company for the Public Service Building Project. Item number nine is a contract amendment with RTL Construction for fireproofing work for the Public Service Building Project. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Knutson Construction Services, Inc. for concrete superstructure work for the Public Service Building, the project. Item number 11 is a contract amendment with Top All Roofing, Inc. for roofing work for the Public Service Building Project. Item number 12 is a contract amendment with Kendall Doors and Hardware, Inc. for additional door and hardware supply for the Public Service Building Project. Item number 13 is a contract amendment with Empire House, Inc. for additional cost for interior glazing work for the Public Service Building Project. And the final item, item number 14, is a collective bargaining agreement, and this is for the Stationery Engineers Unit from 2019 through 2022. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Worsami. Are there any questions? No questions? Our next committee report is the Zoning and Planning Committee Report, given by Chair Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward four items for approval on Friday. First is the denial of a variance appeal for the property at 3754 Pleasant Avenue. Second is the denial of a conditional use permit at 3311 Broadway Street Northeast. The third is the approval of rezoning for 2546 Johnson Street Northeast. And the fourth is an approval of rezoning an alley vacation at 2419, 2423, 2435 Marshall Street Northeast, as well as 30, 34, 38, and 44 Lowery Avenue Northeast. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions? No questions? The next committee report is the Audit Committee, given by Chair Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. While we won't be voting on any of these on Friday, I did wanna just share that at our Audit Committee meeting this week, we were given, we had a visit from our state auditor. Julie Blaha came to our committee, and that was terrific. We also heard and found the recommendations to be acceptable from our state auditor's reports. We did those and received and filed the City of Minneapolis Report, the Park and Recreation Board Report, and also the MBC Reports. And the audit that we received, filed, and published was our gift card audit report, which had some thoughtful recommendations but found no serious misappropriation of funds. Happy to answer any questions, but we don't need to vote on these items on Friday.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? You know, I'm not sure if I know what, gift cards? You referred to gift cards?
Madam Vice Chair, Vice President, we, the Audit Committee did, was asked to, and on our risk assessment, have found that we do use gift cards to appropriate funds from the city for different initiatives. One, some are, most are public health-related, so whether they are gift cards by way of
One, some are, most are public health-related, so whether they are gift cards by way of an agreement from a settlement with companies for things like lead remediation, others are often gift cards that are appropriated either through our school system or through other means and partner, community partners for things like attending health seminars. They tend to be gift cards for things like stores like Target. We are not allowed, and one of them was to make sure we were not still using gift cards that operated like credit cards that come with things like fees and administrative decrease in value over time. We need to make sure we have strong internal controls over these things because it is like handling cash, and the results of that audit report are easily available on our website and mostly found that we were, in general, able to account for those programs.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Then our next committee report is the Executive Committee, given by Council President Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Executive Committee will be forwarding one item, which is creating the appointed position in the Civil Rights Department of the Director of Labor Standards, and if approved, it will be forwarded to Ways and Means in the next cycle, and this would create a new position to oversee the city's enforcement of paid second safe time, minimum wage, and wage theft.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Bender. Are there any questions? Any questions? Seeing no questions and no further business before this committee, we are adjourned.